Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting for tonight. I'll lead us in our prayer and in our pledge. Gracious God our Father, we thank you for this evening. We ask your blessing on this meeting. We ask for your wisdom and knowledge and understanding of all the decisions that we will make to impact the city of Saginaw. Bless city staff, city manager, that we may do the things that are in best interest of this entire city. This we ask in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance. Good flag. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilman Fitzpatrick is excused and Councilman Tibbs is excused. Councilwoman Bench. Councilwoman Chloris. Councilwoman Moore. Councilman Balls. Councilman Clark. Mayor Browning is excused and Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil. We have six members present and three excused.
Okay, let's get started and I'll read the, just our rules for our audience. Just ask our audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, and making rude, obnoxious comments and behavior. We'd also ask that you turn off your cell phones, put them on mute or silence. And those are our rules for our audience tonight. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Under oath. We have proclamation designating October 15th, 2015, as Conflict Resolution Day. And present with us this evening to accept is Jane Odell, the Executive Director, and John Stark, Mediation Coordinator, from the Saginaw Community Resolution Center.
Okay, please approach the podium. Thank you for being here tonight to read the proclamation. We have Councilman Michael Balls to present a proclamation to you.
The proclamation, whereas conflict resolution the way of people solving issues is distinct as well as a means for creating more peaceful communities, and whereas the conflict resolution process empower all individuals, families, community, schools, businesses, and organizations to foster communication and provide solutions that are accessible to the needs and interests of all parties involved. And whereas Michigan Public Act 260 of 1988, known as the Community District Resolution Act, authorized the establishment of community district resolution programs centered through the State of Michigan. And whereas community-based volunteers and professionals who are part of training conflict resolution are the backbone of this program, these trained mediators provide mediation, facilitation, and consultation when asked by their peers or ordered by the court. And whereas these volunteers and professionals serving as mediators provide low-cost, quality service that can strengthen and restore relationships by the leading party and in course of costly litigation, regardless of less time involved to reach a mutual satisfactory solutions rather than an order imposed on them by the third party. And whereas the third Thursday, and I told you, set aside as National Conflict Resolution Day, Resolution Day, in recognition of mediation process and to increase public awareness of constructive ways to resolve interpersonal and individual conflict of any type. Now therefore be resolved, I Dennis Brownie, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2015, a Conflict Resolution Day. In the City of Saginaw, further I would all cities acknowledge the value of conflict resolution and to get involved and support their local community district resolution programs center. It is with therefore I have renewed set my hand and cause the seal of Saginaw to be affixed this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2015. Dennis Brownie, Mayor, Councilperson Amy O'Neil, Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Chloris, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clark, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and the City Manager, Morales.
I appreciate it. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Saginaw and the county as well. We also serve nine or eight other counties, including Genesee, points north to Ross Common. And we provide the service with volunteers, as the proclamation indicated. So we're always looking for folks that want to help resolve the differences in our community to come out and support us. So, thank you so much.
If you need us, give us a call.
Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation designating October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week. And present with us tonight to accept this on behalf of the Saginaw Fire Department is our Fire Marshal, Ralph Martin.
Mr. Martin, thank you for being here. And tonight, we have a proclamation for you as well. And that will be read by Councilperson Floyd Clark.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Martin, for you and on behalf of the city council, for all the fire department, it's my honor to be able to give you this proclamation. Whereas the city of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk for a fire. According to the National Fire Protection Association, half of all home fire deaths were reported between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. One quarter of all home fire deaths resulted from fires that started in the bedroom. And whereas, three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoking, smoke alarms. Statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in homes, home fires by 50 percent. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention, as a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, effectively serves to remind us all of the importance of installing smoke alarms throughout our homes and testing these devices every month. Now therefore be it resolved, I Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Saginaw. And I urge all residents of this city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2015, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Saginaw Fire Department. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2015. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, and Councilpersons Amos O'Neil, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Chloris, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clark, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. Please step forward.
Thank you so very much, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager, and all the citizens of Saginaw. On behalf of the Saginaw Fire Department, we definitely encourage you to acknowledge that Fire Prevention Week as a week in which you can just look and look down and see what you can do to prevent any type of getting yourself in a fire situation. Fire prevention is always what we like to instill forward, you know, first of all. But what to do in case you do get yourself, if a fire does occur, is always important to know what to do also. So we also like to always make sure we have tips for each one of our citizens of Saginaw. We also want to still encourage, you know, with this time going down, as far as sending the clocks back is a good time to change your batteries, also as a reminder. Also a reminder, some of the tips that we like to always try to make sure that you remember, but these are some of our fall tips, is change those batteries no matter what. If you have a unit that needs to have a battery changed, make sure you change those batteries as far as, as it's time of year, it's a good time to do that, with daylight savings time being about to recur. Check and replace all furnace filters. This is a time of year where you're getting ready to turn your furnaces on, it's a good chance to change your furnace filters. Try your furnace, make sure it works, don't wait till it gets really cold, and determine to find out that your furnace not working properly. If you have space heaters that you plan on using in the winter and cold weather, make sure you get the dust off those elements that cause the heat, heating process of a space heater. You don't want those to accumulate, and then you plug it in on the first cold night, and you discover that your space heater may not be prepared for that. Also, if you have a chimney fireplace, before you use that fireplace, have a professional chimney sweep come and examine your chimney. That's something good to probably make sure that is, that's not a nest or anything that have developed inside of your chimneys. That's something that we really like to encourage you to do also. And last but not least, be safe, and make sure, once again, check those smoke detectors, because smoke detectors truly save lives. On behalf of the Fire Department of Saginaw, be safe. And just because it's Fire Safety Week, it's fire safety all year round. Thank you. That list you just read, I was jotting down a couple of those, is there an active list that can be disseminated throughout for the public or on our SEGTB for folks to just kind of get that? I think that's some good information for everybody to know. Absolutely. I can forward some information and make sure we publish it. This is, the particular list, this particular list that I just read is one that we read at all the neighborhood associations at this time. So we will, I could make sure that you have that information. And last but not least, I would love to see each and every one of your smiling faces at our award ceremony, recognition ceremony tomorrow, which is Tuesday at 10 o'clock, Saginaw 801 Federal Central Station. We will be acknowledging and recognizing a lot of the public and some firefighters that well deserve for our recognition. Thank you. Thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tem, we have no personal appearances this evening, so that takes us to the remarks of council.
Okay. I can't recall when we haven't had any personal appearances. Wow. It's been a while. So this will be a record meeting, I think. Okay, members of council, just like to remind you that we all have five minutes on our time. Just ask you to keep those remarks within that timeframe. And tonight, we'll start our comments with Councilperson Dan Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. "Hear the beep where you sleep." I like that. That's a, that's a good little motto. And, you know, I've had to say this to, like, my kids when they move into a house first time and, or they're moving from one to another. I said, the first thing you ought to do is check those, those fire alarms, smoke detectors. Make sure you've got the right kind of extinguishers there. Check them, see if they're out of date, and if they've got pressure in them. And I, I really am looking forward. I always try to make it, and I'll try to make it tomorrow to the award ceremony. Hope to see everybody there. Good job, Fire Department. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. First, I'm gonna start on what I guess would be a somber note in one way, but not in another. And that has to do with yesterday's paper reported that Saginaw in 2014 was still the number four violent city in America. I don't buy it. I'm sorry, I don't buy it. We have a report from the police showing the major crimes down last year substantially. And as someone commented, that reporting is only what gets reported to the FBI. And there are a lot of cities that have been documented that don't report. So frankly, with what our police have done, what our Fire Department has done, what our, our inspection divisions have done, crime is not what this report states. It is down dramatically. And I think that is a story that needs to be told and corrected from what we're getting in the paper, because sometimes you can't believe what you read, other times you can. So there are things in the paper, though, that I do want to mention. Our own Mark Tower here got an award this year, recently, right, Mark? He got an award together with multimedia specialist Jeff Schreier's for a first-place National Reporting Award. I think that's pretty, pretty unique for our town. So thank you to Mark, and thank you to Mr. Schreier, if I'm pronouncing that right. And congratulations as well. There are other good things happening that, as Councilman Dan Fitzpatrick mentioned, "Hear the beep where you sleep" is a great motto. And, and I'm glad you have it, and it actually lets me segue into another great thing here in town. Before I came to the meeting tonight, I stopped at the Castle Museum of Saginaw County History, which has a Motown exhibit starting tomorrow. There was a preview tonight. And it was packed. Not only was it packed, Martha Reeves, from Martha Reeves and the Vandells, was there tonight, having her picture taken with people who were, lots of people who were lined up to have it taken. It is an unbelievable exhibit. There are dozens and dozens of really unique photographs, everything from clothes of the era to video presentations. They were probably originally filmed, but now they're on video. It's really a fabulous exhibit, and I'd invite anybody to get down there and see it. And it's in your own town, in your own historical museum. And something closer, in a way, to the city's operations, there's also, the historical museum is also putting on a cemetery tour of our cemeteries coming up. You can contact, that's October 18 at 2:00 PM. If you're interested in seeing the cemeteries, and that ties in exactly with what our Public Works Department is doing in keeping them up, I might want to mention, Phil, the date, so you can have a heads up. As I said, it's the 18th. But that'll be a unique tour for those who haven't been and had a chance to see the museum. And keeping up the good news, there's more things happening. The newspaper talked about a couple more businesses locating downtown, or the Old Town. The County Culture, Counter Culture Art Gallery is moving back to, into Old Town. And the "You Paint Me" experience is moving closer to the Old Town area. Things are happening down there, and they're happening downtown. So when anybody, when people say this is not, be safe or a good town, I'm sorry, it's the best one around. In fact, we have two other events coming on. The Symphony is post, is, I mentioned this last week, I'll mention it again, has a concert coming up on the 17th. We won't be meeting next week, so I'm gonna mention it again today. It is Alexander Platt, who is a, one of our six guest conductor candidates for the position of Music Director for the Saginaw Symphony. It's October 17 at 8:00 PM at the Temple Theater. There'll be music by Muzagorski, Thompson, Smetna, and Bronz, and the theme is "A River's Tale." It's gonna be exciting. I invite all of you. In fact, I have, if we have a council person who is interested in trying out the symphony, who hasn't had a chance, I have two tickets that I will give to you that I purchased specifically to do so. So, I invite any council member who would like to try the concert to join us. It's the Saturday the 17th, 8:00 PM. You're quite welcome. I expect to see you there. Having covered those things, I, again, I'm very proud of this city, and I want everyone else to be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to thank all the citizens for tuning in to see the city council, take care of their business today. And I would like to congratulate the firefighters for what they do in the city of Saginaw, and to let Ralph know that I wish I could be there tomorrow, but I do have a job. And maybe the rest of the, you can let them know that I do appreciate what they do for the city of Saginaw. I don't have a lot of comments this evening either, but I'm still excited about what I think is happening in the city of Saginaw, like the businesses that's showing up. I feel the citizens are really looking forward to doing some great things in the city of Saginaw. Last city council meeting, I mentioned something about STEM. And I know there are some other STEM events going on in the area. But specifically, I think some people are gonna get together and try to do something where we bring STEM to the people in the community and still have to go out to the colleges. Normally, the top 10% get invited to go to the colleges and stuff like that, I think. And I think it'd probably be better if we can bring it to the city and some of the schools to the people that live in those particular neighborhoods, you know, have some people with some professional experiences, pipe fitters, electricians, scientists, mathematicians, and other technical people to come here in the city. So I know it's gonna happen. I can't say when, but I know it's gonna happen, and I want to be involved in it. So when they do, I'm gonna come back and report that too. Because you'd be surprised on some of the things that you can teach a kid, and he, and you don't think he's really sticking to them, but he, but he does. And eventually, they go on to different careers because of the things that people that taught them. I'm a big, a pioneer of mentoring myself. I'm always looking forward to people mentoring kids in the city of Saginaw. Yes, we do have a lot of crime. We do have a lot of people locked up, and we have a lot of kids that have grown up with no parents, only one parent at home, normally a mother at home. And we need to have some male adults to help them out. So I'm all for that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Good evening, the city of Saginaw. I'd like to congratulate the Saginaw Community Resolution Center, along with Saginaw Fire Department. Job well done, young people. Job well done. My schedule will allow, I will be at the, I will be at the ceremony tomorrow morning and attend at the Fire Department. My schedule will allow it. I don't have a lot of comments. I too am gonna piggyback off of my fellow councilmen. The city of Saginaw has a lot of stuff going on right now, a lot of good things going on. And I'm also like, Councilman Clark, I don't think the crime is going up, I think it's going down. I think that we're doing all we can do to keep it down. Well, like he said, when you read the newspaper, it's doom and gloom. It always makes it seem like the city is just not moving. But we steady having people move into Saginaw, so that's telling us something. We must be doing something right. So I'm excited about the things that are going on, and that's all my comments. Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilman Chloris.
I have no comments.
No comments tonight? Councilwoman Bench.
I'm with him, I have no comment this evening.
No comments tonight?
All right, well, I'll take a few minutes just to say a few things. First off, I'd like to also congratulate our Fire Department. I think you guys have done just an admirable job throughout the year, years, in terms of your, your commitment to this community, your community involvement, you know, going into the schools, into the neighborhood association, et cetera, educating the public. I think that's very, very important. And also providing the free smoke detectors. I'm not sure if there are still many left, but that was, that's always a big deal for this, for this community. So thank you so much for that. Also, to our community Conflict Resolution, you know, there's always a way to resolve conflict, and the best way is if you can talk it out and come to an agreement and, without any violence. So I commend that group. Also, I'd like to welcome my former County Commissioner, Mr. Ray Bartels. Nice to see you, and welcome to city council.
Would it be inappropriate for me to make a?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
I didn't sign off.
No, you can't do it. I'm sorry. You're not allowed.
I'm not allowed.
But I just wanted to acknowledge you.
Pardon?
I wanted to acknowledge your presence. Okay. Thanks for being here.
Good pleasure.
Okay. Also, Councilman Michael Balls mentioned the STEM in science, technology, engineering, and math. That's a real hot topic now for our youth. And I know the explorers, Boy Scouts of America, they really emphasize that in their exploring program. So I'm not sure if the chief and your efforts, is that something that's a part of your exploring to expose our young people to science, technology, engineering, and math, and that whole concept? So that would be something to look forward to. Also, special appreciation to our Streets Department. We do have a new paved state street, part of state street, really nice, travel down state street, it really makes a difference. And I noticed a couple of other areas, the Vessman Parkway area, there was a bad, bad spot there, that's been repaved, and also over the bridge area, I know that was slated as one of the projects down the road. But all those amenities being added really makes it for better travel throughout the community and throughout the city. If you look around, you see there's a lot of activity. So, good job in stretching those dollars to impact our citizens. Also, I want to introduce everybody to Flat Stanley. This is Flat Stanley. And Flat Stanley is all the way from Tucson, Arizona. And Flat Stanley was sent here by my granddaughter, Kalen, who was here at one of our meetings in July. And Flat Stanley has to just kind of go around the city of Saginaw with, with me, my granddaughter's granddad, and just learn about the city. So I thought I'd bring Flat Stanley tonight to city council, so he could see how city council works and just get a good idea of politics. So welcome Flat Stanley to Saginaw, everybody. Had to do that. Okay, and I'd like to conclude my comments with Go Blue. We have, we have something to root for now. Got a good Go Blue coach, and that Jim Harbaugh. And so we're excited about every Saturday when they play. And you like to sit there and look and watch, so Go Blue. Nothing against state, but I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Wolverine at heart. And with that, my colleagues, that concludes my comments.
Very good. Your next order of business is the reports from manager.
Thank you, just a few things today. The STEM education, it may be worthwhile checking with the school district, because last year, they did have a STEM open house at the Saginaw Career Complex. And I know some council members were involved in that. I don't know if they are planning to do that again, but it's something we could talk about at the city school and county liaison meeting and see if that's gonna be coming up again. And then, that might be an opportunity to get more information about it to council. I know we were going to do an open house at the Career Complex. I'm not sure if we ever got that put together, but that's, there are a lot of resources at the Career Complex that are related to STEM, labs, and welding, and a lot of education for kids in, I think, high school, and maybe even ninth grade and up, I believe. So, there's a lot of opportunity there, and it's available to all the kids in the Saginaw school system and other school systems throughout the county as well. And piggybacking on STEM, I know I talked a lot with, with Councilman Tibbs and the police chief with the article that did come out about police statistics, but as a number of you mentioned, just look at our own statistics that we provide you, and you could see that it's going down. In line with the STEM education, you, anyone who's taken statistics can look at those things and look, and find some spurious relationships, and look at, how does everybody report crime? And is it uniform across the United States? Michigan cities, I think, are fairly accurate in their reporting. We have a uniform, uniform reporting, and that's how we report it. And if you look at the listing, the way that it's, that it is ranked in the stories, it's, it's odd to me to see that three Michigan cities are in the top five. I think that tells you something about, about the way things are reported. I also wanted to mention that a project that council approved in our Public Services Department and Office of Management and Budget has been working on, the LED lighting initiative has been noticed by several other communities, have been contacted by other communities who want information about our project, and we were also contacted by the U.S. Department of Energy, their outdoor lighting initiative to to talk to us about best practices. And also, they want to learn more about our projects. That's one of the initiatives that's from the President's Office on improving the energy usage and lighting. So Mr. Kawat and I are going to be having a conference call with the Department of Energy, I think, in the next few weeks. I did send an update to council about the Behringer Building because there was a story about that as well. Unfortunately, that sale did not occur this past Friday due to, I think, maybe possibly some clerical errors, but it will be this coming Friday again on the list for auction. And that's at 10:00 A.M. at the County Courthouse where they typically have the foreclosure auction. So we should find out more about that. Again, everything else that I updated you on is the same. The amount outstanding to the S E D C is about $102,000, $103,000 and that is likely going to be the minimum bid. And finally, I encourage everyone to go to the Fire Awards Ceremony as well. It's open. Council members invited, also the public is invited and it's a good opportunity to, it almost acts as an open house for the Fire Department, so it's, you get to see some of their equipment and talk to the firefighters. I think typically, most of the entire Fire Department is, is in attendance, so it's a good opportunity. So I encourage everyone to attend if you have the time and availability. And that concludes our management update.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to leave a mention to the City Manager that just today, I heard someone compliment the city on the financing of the relighting project and how we were able to do so through a, using the savings from the, from the project to afford the entire replacement of the lighting system of the lights. And I would bring it up only because I want you to be aware that people do realize and see that we are doing things the right way. So I thought it was important for council and the administration to know that people notice these things and, and I think it was a wonderful way that was done and as the public member did as well. Thank you.
That we purchased our newest fire truck. The chief and Office of Management and Budget look at the expenses related to maintenance on the old truck. That's where the savings from the maintenance comes to pay for the loan payment on the truck. So it's, given the age of our equipment, I think that's a way that, that we do need to look at replacement for a lot of our equipment and buildings and I'm good to take note of that.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We are now at the consent agenda.
We need a motion to approve consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. They're moved and support it. Are there any exceptions? No exceptions? They're moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Very good. Your next order of business is the reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of boards and commission members.
We have no appointments at this time. Are there any boards or commissions, committee member updates from council? No updates. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Your next item of business is introduction of ordinances. We do have one this evening. It's an ordinance to amend paragraph B, Dishonored Checks of Section 13.10, Payment of Moneys of Chapter 13, Administrative Policy and Procedure of Title I Administrative Code.
Need a motion to introduce?
Support.
They're moved and support it? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
What's the difference between a check that bounces and a dishonored check? Is that the same thing? It's just a term that we give it? Same thing? And this will be, when it says here dishonored and then under payment of monies, dishonored and then it crosses out checks, payments. So this would be, what else could be dishonored, I guess?
Basically, ordinance change would modernize the ordinance because it's from when we would be taking mailing checks and now we take debit cards and credit cards as well.
Debit, okay, all right.
So that's basically the language change to account for the change in the way we're operating.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, this, this item will be laid over. I'm sorry. They're moved and support it? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, this ordinance will be laid over for charter provisions. Okay? Madam Clerk.
Next item of business are resolutions. Our first resolution is to support the SVRC marketplace in the city of Saginaw.
Need a motion to adopt?
Support.
They're moved and support it? Is there a discussion? Moved and support it? All in favor?
Aye.
This motion is adopted.
Our second resolution is to approve the Municipal Employees Retirement System, 457, Supplement Retirement Program and Trust Master Plan.
Need motion to adopt? They're moved and support it? Is there a discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk?
We are at motions and miscellaneous business. We do have consideration of a closed session to discuss pending litigation per MCL 15.268.
Yes, Madam Clerk, before that, under motion and miscellaneous, I do want to express on behalf of council, a condolences to our city attorney and the loss of your mother. We really express our appreciation for what you do, what your family represents and we're very sorry for your loss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm actually, my friend, I'm going to mention a new guitar store that's coming into Old Town and I think we should, I would actually, is there some way we could get some kind of a update as these things are happening just to keep the council informed so that we could be aware of these things as they're happening? And maybe just from inspections as they grant approval or else from the Planning Department? It just, it'd be helpful, I think, if we all were aware of the, of the things as they develop. If that would be possible, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, it just would be helpful for us, I think, to keep updated on improvements to the city because those are, anytime someone moves into our town and decides to do a business here, that's important. We need to recognize them as a council and we need to encourage the public to use, to buy local, to use our local businesses. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. We need a motion to consider closed session. Madam Clerk, do a roll call.
Support.
I'm sorry. Move and support it? Roll call.
Councilman, Councilwoman Moore.
Yes.
Councilman Balls.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Councilman Tibbs is absent. Councilwoman Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilman Chlorus?
Yes.
We have six yes votes and a yes.
Close session.